Call this me, the Oskaloosa City Councilor. Today is Monday, October 2nd, 2023. We start with the invocation from Bethel Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Our Father, we come to you tonight with gratitude that we can live where there's infrastructure to consider and businesses that are active in an economic development. And we are humbled that you have allowed this, that we are humbled that you have given us this freedom to move forward, to consider the future, and to know that you are active in all things that are decided, and that our city might be one of peace and trust and personal responsibility of the citizens. We do thank you, Lord, for these individuals who have given their time this evening. We ask, Lord, that you would grant them just clear vision as they go forward, as well as clarity of communication one with another, that they'd be listening ears with an intent to make decisions and go forward for your honor and your glory. And the discernment they would have of good and evil, right and wrong, would be dwelling in their hearts, and that they'd understand the consequences of the choices and have that vision for our community. And, Lord, we do praise you for that and pray that our true, our city would be one that would be inviting to others and people would be wanting to take up residence because they see in the hearts of our lives your working, of your absolute standard. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Allman? Burnett?
Here.
Calgery?
Here.
Comfort?
Here.
Drost? Hermson?
Here.
Ocean?
Here.
Okay. First item up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to speak before the mayor and city council. Asked to keep statements brief, time is limited to three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Deafening silence? Moving on. Next up is the proclamation signing for the Community Planning Month. And so, we have a proclamation that I've just signed, and I'd like to read it out. And it has to do with the Proclamation for Community Planning Month in October of 2023. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people live, work, and play. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the shared visions of their neighborhoods. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month during the month of October as an opportunity to highlight the contributions that sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our neighborhoods and environment. And whereas in November of 2022, the city of Oskaloosa adopted Plan Oski after a 12-month public outreach effort to update the community's vision and goals found in the 2000 Comprehensive Plan. And whereas the American Planning Association's Iowa chapter has announced the city will receive the 2023 Daniel Burnham Award for Comprehensive Plan in recognition of its community planning efforts with Plan Oski. And whereas receipt of the Daniel Burnham Award and celebration of National Community Planning Month give us the opportunity to again publicly recognize the dedication of the Oskaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission, the Plan Oski Advisory Committee, city staff and consultants, and the many community stakeholders who contributed their time and expertise to the future of the city of Oskaloosa. It concludes saying now therefore, I, Mayor David Cruttsville, hereby proclaim the month of October 23 as Community Planning Month in the city of Oskaloosa, Iowa, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. And so, this proclamation has been signed. Sean, do you have more to add?
Mayor, yes, thank you. I appreciate the proclamation and recognition. So Plan Oski is the community's plan, and this is something we should really be proud of. It's now an award-winning plan, and there are a lot of people that contributed to this. There's a great deal of public input that went into this project, stakeholders, and we have a lot of volunteers who contributed their time and expertise. Several of them are here with us this evening, so I'd like, if you could, to have those members recognized, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also our advisory committee. And help me thank them with a round of applause.
Okay. Please come forward. Anybody would like to say anything to the council?
Thank you. So even though we hired a consultant for this project, like I said, we do have a lot of people who contributed to this, and we thank them for that. Planning really does help good communities become great. I firmly believe that. Not all cities see that, but we do that here in Oskaloosa. So thank you for your support and planning in Oskaloosa.
Want folks to come forward?
You're gonna get some mugshot.
Yeah.
Yeah, all P and Z people too.
That's right.
Yep.
If it's just me and Sean, nobody will know what we're doing.
I can look right.
That's right, that's right.
Andy. It's Paul Biden and your brother.
I need to like, hi.
Oh, yeah.
Can I say something? Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I've been back in Oskaloosa, yeah, my mic's on, for about, that's just shy of 10 years now, and I, when I came, I've been gone for 40 years. And I used to hear Little Ways by Sigourney, but it just looked different when I came back to town 10 years ago. It wasn't what I remember. And I actually wrote an editorial at the time saying that, and I'd never written an editorial in my life. And then 10 years later, you fast-forward 10 years, and it's amazing. I mean, it just isn't our town. And so, you don't get 100% better with one thing, you get 100% better with 100 little things. And we're all little things. Every one of you are a little thing that are helping us do what's going on in Oskaloosa right now, and it's absolutely spectacular. So I think we all can be proud to be in Oskaloosa, and I'm proud to say that, and it's because of folks like you that help us make it that way. So I sincerely thank you for your efforts very much. Thank you.
Very well done. And I, yeah, when you're the mayor, you get to receive a lot of compliments, and it's for the work that everyone else is doing. And so, I wish there was some way to genuinely reflect that off, but I hear it over and over and over again, the feel, the excitement of the city, and just how well it's working. And that, it comes with planning, and there's no surprises there. And it, you know, the folks that are involved with the planning, but also those who are in a position of decision-making. When someone comes to a Planning and Zoning Commission and says, "This is what I want to do," it's holding them to the standard that will be the future of the city and keeping that momentum going. And so, thank you especially for that. It's hard work, I know it, and last I looked, we don't pay you anything for it, but the work is genuinely excellent. So thank you very much for that.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce, well, I should say welcome, Beth, a representative from Main Street Oskaloosa. She is here to make two announcements. One, in regards to a tour, and two, I believe, introduce our new Main Street director. So, Beth?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council and workers of the community, yes. Yes, this is our new Main Street director. She started on September 18th. Her name is Angie Foster. Angie, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you for having me. I have been part of this community, now basically 12 years back. I did graduate from my school here in Oskaloosa and went to William Penn, so I've been part of the community for about 30 years. My family, my parents still live here, they've been here for over 40 years, and I am super excited to see what the team and I can do for the community.
Yes, and we have our board president here, Allison McGuire, second from the end. All right, we are going to promote our Elevate Tour. This is our second annual Elevate Tour. Help me with this. Last year, we explored and opened up second-story buildings downtown because there was a push on second-story housing and so forth, and that was highly successful. This year, we decided to do first-floor commercial spaces and so forth, and so you each received a ticket to for free admission that day. It's October 14th on a Saturday from 10 to 1, from 10 o'clock in the morning till 1:00. I don't think it says that. No, it is. It's from 10 o'clock to 20. There actually will be ads in the shopper this week and next promoting it. Okay, so these are our tour locations, all right? One of them's going to be Bridget's Public House, which is the MacMillan Building. Another one's going to be Oskaloosa Outfitters, just got new owners, new building owners. Studio Oski, Beacon of Hope at that address, and one more, well, we're adding a couple more here these two weeks beforehand, and one just said yes today. What was it, Angela?
The old post office building, so people will be able to go through.
Oh, outstanding. Yeah.
Evidently, at this stage, construction can allow a tour inside for that date. That's, I think that's all I have, and I thank you for your time.
Welcome aboard, Angela.
Yeah.
Okay, next up is the adoption of the consent agenda. These are all items that are routine in nature, typically handled through a single motion and a vote. There wasn't anything in particular I wanted to call out. Do we have a motion support for the consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Hermson?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next up is the announcement of vacancies we have on various boards and commissions. The Airport Commission, there's one vacancy for a term that is ending in December 2027, and one vacancy for a term ending in December of 2028. Our Building Code Board of Appeals has two vacancies for regular members and one ex-official member. The Historic Preservation Commission has one vacancy. It's for a term ending December of 2024. And the Board of Adjustments, we have two vacancies for terms ending in December of 2024. Getting into our regular agenda, first up is to consider a motion accepting a donation from the Golden Goose Club.
At this time, I'd like to ask if you can fill that with the Golden Goose Club to join me and to present what that donation is and further discuss any question.
Thank you, Stu.
Okay, and this is Jeremiah Modlin. We call him the Mike guy, but he's a genius, so I don't know. It's kind of short, but he's become my assistant. I like that title better. But anyway, I think everybody here knows what the Golden Goose Club is. Some of you are more familiar than others because I see people in there that have actually had funding from us, and that's why I passed out the gold sheet that tells all the projects and the donations that we've had from the members ever since we started in 2016. Well, about three years ago, just for a little background on the project we're doing now, was I fell in love with this 20-foot Christmas tree that promised us all kinds of amazing light shows. And it got set up, and it wasn't quite as amazing as we hoped it would be. And then we found out later, I mean, not to the, not to the lack of effort by Grant with the city and Locan at Musco, they worked very hard on the tree. It is a beautiful thing, but we only had about five or six different sequences of lights going, and I had kind of sold it as a different light show every night, so I kept going uptown every night to see if it was different, but it was pretty much the same thing. Anyway, the problem that the tree had was, for being a $19,000 Christmas tree, it was missing a $20 part, and it was kind of all part of, at that time, supply chain issues and COVID and anything else we could think of that messed it up. But then, three years later, I meet this young man, and he has it in his barn. So he's, he's got the part, and he's going to make it amazing for us. And so then, this year, a Golden Goose project that came to us was, I've always been amazed with lighting projects that you can drive by and set your radio channel, and the lights move with the music, which is why we called it Dancing Lights, because the lights do dance to the music, and it'll make everybody else want to dance too when you see it. But then I learned, just, it just kind of dropped in my lap, that Jeremiah does this. He lives out by Barn City, and he does the dentist's home every year. And I called him, and one thing led to another, and he is going to forego decorating his home to possibly decorate the downtown square with a light show like this. And so, we brought it to the Golden Goose Club on, as a part of Main Street, because the tree that we bought three years ago was donated to Main Street, and I had just hoped that this could be an addition to that project and be part of the lighting. And it, then, there were a few complications. Just put it that way. And so, the city, after I spoke with Amal, and she very generously wanted to still entertain the idea, so now we're, we're planning to do it as a part of the city, and the $14,000 worth of lights that we bought for this project will be donated to the city. And because the Golden Goose Club, once we, once we gather the funding and we do our voting process, we aren't the owner of these things anymore. We, we just provide the money and we pass them on to another organization, because who would keep the lights, you know, who would keep the Christmas tree? And...
Well, you'd have to fix it if one went bad. You'd be the one having to fix that one light too, right? So, yeah.
That's just one reason why I don't want to stay. But anyway, now that I have Jeremiah, I'm not near as worried about that. So... And so, Amal and Stu have been giving me their time, and the ladies at Main Street, we've, we've had a few meetings about this, and it turns out to be it's going to be a city project. So we want to show you the short video of maybe three songs, which will be an example of what Jeremiah is going to put together in part.
These are just animations, they're just demonstrations, and they've actually done some changes to them already, but this will give you the general idea.
That's the amazing tree right there in the background. Which, after three years, it will be a big part of this show. And like I said, I named it Dancing Lights because the lights move to the music, and it will make you want to dance.
Christmas, Christmas time is here, and Christmas songs you love to hear. Thoughts of joy and hope and cheer, but mostly shopping, shopping, shopping. Christmas, Christmas time is here, the sleigh bells and the red bells here. Songs and songs we love to hear, all played a thousand times each year. Earn this same song 20 times, and it's only Halloween. It's not a normal holiday. Christmas, Christmas time is here, and Christmas songs you love to hear. Thoughts of joy and hope and cheer, but mostly shopping, shopping, shopping. Christmas season starting sooner every year. It's October, sorts of plastic Christmas trees. Run, sack the ball, shop until you lose your mind. Spike the egg blossom, if that can once grew to a roasty Christmas. It's been a trick or a curly brown star. And it's time to do the Christmas game, and if you can't get it, dance, well, that's okay. I'm going to do the kick butt. All you need is a tree, some lights about a thousand. Presents wrapped them up and break for snow. I'll run to your closet, find your Christmas sweater, scream, be carols all the way. Oh! Play all the way to California, it's the Christmas. You can't get Halloween to Christmas Day. It's the most wonderful time of year, we're running around with Christmas cheer. Hey, what's trolling you, my friend? It's not fair if you're Jewish, Jewish. Jewish, Jewish, trade or trade or trade, or I made it out of clay. You realize that Christmas Day the only holiday. Hey, he's right who made these laws, but wait, here comes Santa Claus. Santa Claus, Santa Claus, Santa Claus. Santa, 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 Santa. Hey, Santa to the gang, gang, come the big, the gang, gang. Join in the parade. I'm going to go grab some Chinese. All you need is a tree, some lights about a thousand. Presents wrapped them up and break for snow. Run to your closet, find your Christmas sweater, scream, be carols all the way. Oh! Play all the way to Indiana, it's the Christmas. You can't get that thing, wait for Halloween. Please share this night. A wonderful day, a happy Hanukkah. A happy Hanukkah to you, a happy Hanukkah. We live a merry Christmas, not a sad. Also want a merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, and merry one to you.
So I think you have the idea. So Jeremiah's going to throw in a few...
Sure.
Yes, you are. Details about how many lights go into this display, because it's fascinating, so...
Yeah, just a few short numbers. The demo that you just saw essentially, that is, there's about 75,000 individual lights in it in total. There's, each individual bulb has three different lights in it, and so that's how you get to 75,000, but there's essentially over 30,000 lights in just what you saw in the animation. There's a little over 20,000 lights in the tree itself, that's on top of the 75,000 that the Main Street already owns, that does work, and I've grounded to do all of those things that you saw in those demos already, because it's actually been in my house for the last 10 days or so. I've been working with it, and it's already doing that, but basically, unless you have questions, I mean, if you happen to answer any questions, if you don't have any...
I just find it stunning, you know, that, first off, getting, you know, getting the infrastructure, all the lights where they need to be, and then to do the coordination as well, there's, you've got to have a streak of artistic in you as well as engineering. And so, I find that really cool.
So the structure for the lights, I mean, are there like poles, and then you have the curly things, and what's all that look like?
So basically, what you saw, I don't know if you could, could you bring that back up, just pause it on one of the stills maybe, so I can sort of point out a little bit different. Sorry.
And this is going on all the time that we have the square lit up, correct?
So we sort of, the way that we were sort of approaching it is, is as opposed to, can you just skip over to now and pause it? Yeah, anyway, yeah, that works. So sort of as far as scheduling goes, to answer that question, and then I'll get back to the...
Yeah, sure.
...the structure part. What we were looking at is, we participate in the lighting ceremony on the 18th, I believe it is, the 18th of November. We participated in that, and then we would not actually run our show again until the day after Thanksgiving, basically Black Friday. And then on each Friday and Saturday night for the next five weeks, which basically gets us up to January 3rd, we would run it from 6 to 9. Yeah, 6 to 9 p.m., and then Sunday through Thursday, we would run it 7 to 9, so basically two hours, and that would be outside of the regular painting of lights. In these demos, the bandstand itself is lit, and there's three spheres in the middle, which since decided to not do that, we're not going to do anything with the bandstand, except for during our two-hour or three-hour window, we're going to turn those off, just the bandstand lights during our show, if they want to affect the buildings, if any of the lights near the other show, just the bandstand lights, and then we'll resume those lights after our window has left. During the, oh, so the spirals and such, can't see them, that's still green. The spirals are actually just wrapped around existing large trees that are there.
Gotcha, okay.
Lights wrapped around them. All of the individual... Can you just skip ahead, just like click somewhere else? So all of the little individual vertical lines, those are actually the walk-by lights.
They're there already. Okay, gotcha. All right, cool.
And those are just those wrapped, and then obviously, it's just, the others are outlined in the sidewalk.
So then when the show's on, the painting with lights is off?
No, the painting with lights along the building is off. The only thing that we're going to shut off are the lights on the bandstand.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. All right.
Just for that, here to the right.
That'd be too much.
How many different tunes do you think you're going to have?
40.
Okay. More, some traditional stuff as well?
Yep.
Cool.
And just for example, like one of them is, you ever mean one, Mr. Grant?
Yeah.
There's a whole eclectic mix.
And you're broadcasting that over FM frequencies? Is that what you're doing? Okay.
Yep.
And also the bandstand speakers.
Oh, so the bandstand will play it downtown. If you don't have your radio on, you can listen to it.
As you're walking through the park. We're going to control the volume, so essentially you can hear from the sidewalk, but not past that.
Yeah. I was going to say, in 1980, I lived on the second floor on the south side at Christmas time, and that's all my, and it was hot because there was a radiator. We couldn't control it, so we left the window open, so my wife and I still talk about, all we heard was Christmas music all the time.
Are you being paranoid with the window shut?
And that was 40 years ago, right? So, yeah.
Now, and that kind of leads into the part where we're going to do the 18th, where they turn on all the lights, and that's actually turned into a big event downtown. It's surprising how many people were down there last year. And so, this show will come on, the tree will come on, the painting with lights will all come on at that ceremony. And then Jeremiah and I just kind of personally don't like a lot of Christmas before Thanksgiving, so that's why we opted to have the lights come on.
You mean, you're going to try people off?
Every Thanksgiving, yeah.
You're going to give them 30 songs? I mean, if it goes on for nine weeks as opposed to five, that's a significant difference. And I think most people sort of are really into Christmas at Friday, on Black Friday. Prior to that, it's sort of like, oh my gosh, they have Christmas stuff out already? Because we haven't forgotten past like the songs of Halloween or Thanksgiving or whatever. So that's sort of why we approached it, so I can play it.
I have a question about licensing, and I know that we spoke about it in the Main Street Chamber meeting, just for some of the characters and the music. Is that all in the public domain, or...
The music itself, there's, it's a combination of, there's royal, uh, royalty free music in there, and for the music that does the proper, please, there'll be a license that's issued that is part of presentation that they are dedicated for and everything, to actually have a public use license for music.
So, and then like the Simpsons characters as well?
Those and those are fill-ins for the purpose of the animation, those are next work.
Okay.
It's more to demonstrate the capabilities of the trees that have actually been used up since this point.
How long's it take to set this all up?
Forever. No, actually, I mean, to build this, in reality, when I was, because I've been at my home for the last six years, started the programming, so I usually start it in like March, and it usually takes, I mean, it's, this isn't my job, it's just a hobby, so I mean, it's just on free time and that sort of thing. Usually takes about six months to do the programming, then usually takes at my house, which includes 150 of the theme sheds that's 40-foot tall, and... fifty different theme sheds that's forty by the hall and doing with the weather, and there's all kinds of experience factors, it usually takes me about five to six weeks to go there. This, to me, I think I've.
And I just want to point out this little tidbit, I asked him one day, if, if we didn't have you, which I just stumbled onto it actually, but if we didn't have him, what would it cost to have a show like this, all, you know, the technology, the choreography, the installation and everything, and he said you wouldn't do it for a hundred thousand dollars.
And let me add a little caveat there, the only reason I know that is because, like I said, this is my hobby, it's not, I don't do it as a profession, and it's sort of either meant to be, you do it as a hobbyist, or you do it as a professional item designer. The individual, his name is Tom, that George, he's sort of my mentor, that I learned from, a lot of his stuff from over the years, he actually has a company called Magical Light Shows, and just out of curiosity, I had asked him how much it would cost for a show of like similar quantity of lights, not necessarily in City Square, and that was the estimate, he said his company would charge about a hundred and twenty thousand.
And so the Golden Goose Club donated fourteen thousand dollars to do this light show, so, and with all of his generosity involved and his ability to put these songs together, it's just to me, a really good opportunity for Oskaloosa to shine, so.
And speaking for me personally, just in case you're curious, the whole reason I'm doing it, because I'm actually not doing it at my house this year, to do this instead, the whole reason that I started doing this initially was sort of, believe it or not, sort of a de-stressor from real-life work and such during the holiday season, but more importantly, I tried, I wanted people to take notice of it and to maybe find it as a hobby for themselves. I live in the middle of nowhere, way down the street.
A lot more people are just.
Even given that, I've had, in the largest year, I had almost eight thousand people come, like unique people come out to the middle of nowhere just to watch my show. I know at least four people that have actually started doing it at their own homes, one in Lawrence, Iowa nonetheless, who is really into it, he's doing a really good job. I want this to be a hobby that other people latch on to, it's something they want to do, and I really think there's gonna be a lot of kids inspired when they see it, it'll be a really good outlet for them to do each year, something that's not just materialistic company, it's not just about presence and what they get, it's like their, I think, their community overall.
And Oskaloosa would probably be the only town in Iowa that will have a show like this.
As far as I know, there's no other city in all of Iowa that's doing this.
And he has promised me he'll only work in this.
I have not promised that.
But again, this isn't enough, it's a hobby, so, like he said, let's just get through
this year, and then we'll take.
Oh, and that's another piece of it, he said, let's just get through this year, you know, I don't doubt at all, just from, I only met him a month ago, but I don't doubt at all that this, he's not incredibly capable, and so if it goes over this year.
Based on community feedback specifically, that's why we say when we say if it goes over, let's get through this year, that's what I mean, and I know the beginning is the same thing, we don't want to say, yes, we're gonna do this for the next five years because we don't know, we want to get the community's feedback, perhaps the community will hate it, can't imagine that it would, but we want to discuss it this year and then hear their feedback and see if they liked it, if it was a nuisance, if they did appreciate it, what things they liked, what things they didn't like.
Yeah, I can't really imagine anybody not liking it, but, you know, there's always one, and so he's gonna be around and, and, you know, part of being my assistant, he says, if I want it next year, I can do it.
I just learned the title.
Thought it was good. So.
Do you guys have any more questions?
Do you like the idea, do you?
Yeah, I love it, but is Main Street gonna do any promotions on this?
Yes.
We will.
So you want me to answer that question, Allison?
Yeah.
Okay, so they are going to help promote it for the lights when they turn on, and also make a public announcement that if anybody has any sort of effect that could be caused by the lights, you know, this is a time to leave, we will make sure that that's out on everything, letting people know of the times that the lights are going to be on, and so we will help publicize it and get that out to all the media and everybody.
In addition to that, something we've re-discussed too, the night of the lighting ceremony, I think Jane and I discussed anyway, putting some signs out and such, lets people know there's a chance of people that love to, for example, picking lights and such, like you wanna give them that fair warning, that was one of the biggest health concerns anyway, but I think we're gonna make some signs and have them out available the night of the ceremony, we're also gonna make an announcement, I think, autumn, right?
Yep.
And we're also gonna incorporate that into sort of, I believe anyway, our goal is to make it into a little skate as far as the whole lighting ceremony goes, like turn on the painting of lights, then the tree, and then the show itself, and part of that skate will be performing everyone like, oh, fair warning, this is my one evening.
And Jane and I also are working, trying to get Ed Wilson to come down and turn the lights on, so we'll see.
Oh, cool.
We just think it would add a little bit of pizzazz to the night, so, I don't know.
How about downtown merchants, we've got some housing that is elevated up above to be able to look down on the light show, is there any promotion, you know, thinking in terms of maybe there's some opportunities for people to also be able to build off of that?
These are all things we discussed, I think we were looking for approval, and then those were items we would proceed with, however that relationship were presented in Main Street and those who are involved.
Because Main Street has the majority of the contracts for painting with lights, and so it's specifically the building owners that we have those contracts with, but we do hope to work with the city to help promote, and let the business owners know, but also inform residents, because I was a resident out there, and it does shine through your windows, so you don't really get a break at all for those many weeks to months during Christmas, so we wanna get that out as soon as possible.
That's one of the things we're cognizant of, to your Bible, I mean, we're all there this long, I mean, so we didn't actually interrupt regular life, it's a little secret anyway, it was mainly during like main hours as opposed to outside of hours, so we wouldn't be annoying everyone.
Yeah, and it shouldn't affect anything else, the painting with lights will go on just like always, this will definitely be turned off during the parade, of course, but, you know, it's definitely a nice addition to the lighting, so, just to kind of keep new people coming to town to see what else we added, and, and if this goes well, you never know what we might add next year.
It'll be interesting to see how many streets are open next year, because I bet there will be a.
So as far as the FM radio signal that goes out, is the broadcast antenna located in the square then?
Yep, it originates from the square, and the attenuation is such that it doesn't extend past the square, and it's on an unlicensed frequency, it's open for public usage.
Okay, okay, sounds very well thought out.
We've tried.
Tried to address all the things that we could think of.
And, and that's another thing, you know, just recently, we've rethought using the bandstand because there is already a lighting process in the bandstand, and, you know, we were originally wanting to add to that, the, just the stationary lights would be off, and then this light show would go on, but Jeremiah really thinks it can be just as effective without using the bandstand, and we all know the bandstand can cause issues, and we don't want to be part of them, so I think this is the easiest way to get around that and, and not involve the bandstand, and this'll look just as nice without that piece when he's got other props, you know, that'll be added through there, I just think it'll be, it'll be fine with or without the bandstand, but the bandstand has other lighting that would be on when this light is not on, so it's, it's a win-win, really. Just for clarification, the tree on Main Street maintains and stores and that, and then this light show, the city? Yeah. Okay, because I don't want to be a killjoy, but the beginning of the meeting was about planning, so we'll have to work into the budget at some point in the coming years, what the maintenance, the updating. Yeah, and there, our intention is for there to be no cost to the city at all. The what is? Our intention is for there not to be additional cost, if we add lights in a future year, you know, we'll, we'll figure that funding out. Okay, sounds good.
And you have permanent fixtures, I mean, they'll be installed this year, they'll be taken out this year, and then it'll just be a matter of story, because I, you want to do it next year.
And Grant assures us that he's got plenty of room, even though this looks mammoth.
It breaks down into four rubber made containers.
Wow.
What'd you say, four rubber made containers?
Good-sized rubber made containers.
It'll take far less space than the tree currently does.
Yeah, the tree's huge. That's impressive, because, I was on the home tour, and boy, some of the homes had twenty boxes of stuff. So, you know. Okay.
Question for Dave Dixon, actually, I presume you don't see any potential liability or legal issue with this?
I hate to be that person, but. I hate to be that person, too, I did make a note, actually.
Well, then don't be, Dave, just don't be, okay?
He's a lawyer, he has to.
I just want to purpose this, I want to see this happen.
I do, I do.
It's important, obviously, to have a mixture of secular holiday tunes together with ones that may be overtly religious to avoid running into any problems, there are groups or sometimes individuals out there that may want to challenge things and.
Part of that one song made me wince a bit, so.
You know, as long as it is, there's informally what the law calls the three reindeer rule, that if you have in your holiday decorations on the square, so they're not overtly religious, but they're looking as well to the secular aspects of the holiday, and it's celebration that you can clear that hurdle, and for that reason, obviously, I want to make sure we're not, now, the tunes that you saw there, I don't, certainly I don't see the grinch offending anybody in that respect, but it's important to have a mixture of things and not simply things that would be too overtly, be seen as being too overtly religious to try to run afoul of First Amendment concerns.
To answer your question, hopefully, about decorations, Andy, Andy's the only really identified viable object, I don't know what that calls it.
I think we solved that, I don't know how many years ago, we had that challenge.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I would hate to see someone try to ruin this for the city.
And we was in every, right, we was in compliance, you can call it that way if you like, but, yeah.
In reality, that is sort of the purpose of the bandstand song that you did in the demo, presented addresses, also, not just Christmas, it's all of the holidays, Jewish holidays, they hold a whole culture, that's sort of the intention of that, that's problematic, of course, we don't have to use it, but that is sort of the goal behind, using that song specifically.
Well, and do you think it's safe to say, try, and if we get complaints, we eliminate that song?
Well, if we get complaints, we'll deal with it.
Yeah.
We have a city manager, we entrust to make those decisions, so.
Some of those things are watched closely, I know here, a few years ago, when there was a fire downtown, the fire department came over to help, and on their extension bucket, they had to cross on there, and we got complaints.
Did we really?
We did.
So they'd rather it just burn? Seriously?
Well.
Let's just let it burn, especially if it's your house, let's just let it burn, people, god, get over it. You asked me to be back on city council, buckle up, so.
Definitely difficult to please everyone, but we're trying, so.
We have a, we have.
But no, the idea is to have variety.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's nothing wrong with variety.
And back to what Charlie said, I mean, you're gonna get complaints regardless of what you do, you're gonna get complaints, so I think we have to be careful about one complaint being the thing that we change the world over, I think, you know, we have to be careful of that as well.
You haven't done anything creative if you don't get any complaints.
Yeah, right.
There can obviously be a legitimate thought about it, but as is oftentimes the case in life, sometimes it seems like it gets pushed too far.
True.
It is.
We have our own traditions here in the USA, you know, sorry, but I've been around the world a bit, and everybody celebrates it differently.
Yeah, that's correct.
And this is how we do it here.
Well, you know, and if we don't try, we won't know.
Yep, I agree.
And if we do try, and ninety-nine people out of every hundred like it, I think that's a great success, and I think that this will draw people to town, and, and anybody that drives into town may, you know, buy food, stop at the Amazing Market and buy a tank of gas, you know, so, I mean, I just, I really feel it's a win-win for the community, we may learn different, you know, don't know till you try.
Speaking from a technical perspective, your implementation is very agile, so I say if there's thirty songs that are gonna be available, I mean, if something happens, if someone has a problem with one of them or whatever, I mean, it's just a matter of a couple of months, and it's out of the mix.
Yeah, oh, and, and speaking of that, my assistant has also said that he will be downtown every night when these lights get turned on.
I'd say I quite like that, but.
Well, that's all right. We should be paying him soon, so, yeah, be careful.
Oh, you have, you have other assistants, right?
She's right there.
Now, because that's the next question, is, you know, is there only one driver of this thing?
No, we're not going to be on purpose, very much intentionally, I had pretty close communication with Logan from Moscow.
And Grant.
And Grant, and, yep, and Vicky, I think he's gonna be my assistant, but no, there's gonna be multiple people that have the ability, plus there's also our open door aspect, because I mean, weather happens, winter happens, if I can't get down here, there's, I will have to go to the street or whatever, and so will the other people there.
Your honor, the item is for council to consider accepting the donation, staff will work out the detail, if council is on board, staff will take it from there, thank you.
Okay, so this is a leadership opportunity, does anybody want to make the motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Cola Jerry?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Can we just take advantage for one second, though, Vicky, so this is what I was talking about earlier tonight, when it's hundreds of people that make a difference, how many women do you have in the Golden Goose Club right now?
Currently, we have a hundred and eighty-six.
Oh, my god, that's amazing.
That are actively making their donations.
Could you just, since you have the bullet point, but could you just, I'm sure there's people in our community that are new or whatever that don't know, could you give us a, you know, the elevator speech of what it is, so if somebody doesn't know, they, they can participate?
Sure.
Yeah.
It's an organization that I started in two thousand sixteen with the idea that if women would want to donate a hundred dollars per quarter, we had, at that time, Ann Brower was working real hard to get the first alley going, but she needed funding, and if you look at your Golden Sheet, the very first project we did, I think we donated sixty-three hundred or sixty-five, something like that, so that meant we only had sixty-three members at that time, and since it has grown, we've had a lot of people, you know, that are in it for a year, and then they go do something else with their donated money, but we're up to a hundred and eighty-six right now.
And so what happens, how's that money get distributed, how do you, as a group, what do you do, I guess?
As a group, I send an email each quarter, we meet the third Thursday of the last month of each quarter, March, June, September, and December, and I describe the projects to them, a lot of times we have a, you know, like, we were able to send this out, and so people get a pretty good idea of what they're voting on, so a lot of people vote absentee, believe it or not, a lot of people have never, ever voted, they just figure their hundred dollars is going to turn into a twenty thousand dollar project, and with the daily match, it turns into a forty thousand dollar project sometimes, so we present these projects, and it's a very simple meeting, we have three presentations, and we vote right then and there, and whoever gets the most votes, which project gets the most votes, gets our funding, and then they don't get the money until they actually physically start on the, on the project and present with invoices, so.
Well, it's absolutely spectacular, so just thank you for doing this, I mean, not just this project, but back to, it just, this is the kind of stuff that makes our community what it is, so thank you.
It really does, and to have this many ladies, you know, if we would have had everybody join and stay the whole time, and people quit for a variety of reasons, people move away, they lose jobs, you know, all kinds of different things, but we've had over four hundred ladies be members at one time or another, not, you know, consistently, or all at the same time, but that's still, to me, an impressive number for a community this size, and it runs so incredibly smooth every quarter, we don't ever have any conflict, you know, obviously, we don't all have the same passion, we're not all voting for the same project, but it, it just goes incredibly smoothly, and this past time, we were fortunate to be able to fund two projects, one being the flags that Scott came and presented, and then our, our light project, so that's a double win for us, when we actually can fund two projects, and if you've noticed from the beginning of two thousand sixteen to the present time, and you see how much more our donations are adding up to, that's a direct result of having more members. When we started out, we really had. we started out, we really had a goal of 100 members.
I knew that was what it was, yeah.
And I wasn't really very satisfied with that when we hit 100. So now we're going for two.
Well, nice job. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Amal and Stu, for all your help.
If I could add, I've heard, I had heard of similar clubs in other towns and how wonderfully, you know, successful they were. But it is thanks, okay, to your persistence and enthusiasm and charm, okay, that this really worked. So, good leadership.
You know, it's kind of like before I.
It isn't magic. It takes a lot of hard work.
But it's also very fun. And all the ladies really enjoy being part of it, you know? And our meetings are fun, and it's social gathering as well. So, yeah, there's, it's gotten big enough now, though. Honestly, there's never a day go by that I don't do something goosey. It just takes a lot more time now that we have a lot more projects, and we follow up on old projects. And just like now, you know, we couldn't contribute that much to Edmondson Park in the scope of what size it is. But the ladies are proud to have been a part of it. So that's just one more thing. The Adirondack Chairs got put in the library, green space. And, and there's just lots of things that are popping up around town that, that have been fun additions. And we all know the budgets just keep going cut, cut, cut. But if we can do this and have a few extras for people to enjoy in our community, I just think it's wonderful. And, yeah, I always say, it's, it's an organization that every community could have, but Oskaloosa does have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Moving on in the agenda, item B. This is to consider a motion waiving the developers' default under section 6.6, only through July 1 of 2024. And consistent with section 11.4, such a waiver should not be deemed to waive a breach of any other provision or any other subsequent breach of section 6.6 pursuant to the development agreement with Oskaloosa Gateway Hotel LLC that is dated July 9 of 2019, and continue authorizing certification for tax increment for payment of an economic development grant. Lot of complex stuff here. On July 1 of 2019, the city council approved Resolution 1907.87, approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Oskaloosa and the Oskaloosa Gateway Hotel LLC. Pursuant to the terms and conditions, Oskaloosa Gateway Hotel was required to hire at least 15 full-time equivalent employment units to work the development property by July 1 of 2020, and to retain a monthly average of 15 full-time equivalents until the termination date in order to be eligible for economic development grants. Oskaloosa Gateway Hotel LLC averaged approximately 62% occupancy as a rolling 12-month average, which exceeds the performance of similar hotels in the region. The current staffing level of 13 FTEs is reasonable, as they have adjusted their operational procedures to provide a high level of service despite the ongoing worker shortage in many industries, including hospitality. Oskaloosa Gateway Hotel is requesting the city waive the developers' default and provide the economic development grant. Development agreement is on file and available for review in the city clerk's office. Staff is recommending approval of the motion, waiving developers' default under section 6.6 of the approved development agreement between the parties. Do we have a motion of support for this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. Of course, this is happening everywhere, right? Maybe it's time to revisit the agreement. At the time of the agreement, that's, life was different then, but things have changed.
Do you want to be more specific?
I don't want to get into the weeds, but back then, even before the pandemic, right? Pretty much everybody was working. Now, after the pandemic, it's hard, it's hard to get anybody to go to work.
Well, I'd like to flip it, though, just because I have 20-year-olds who are employed, and a lot of times, they're not employed full-time, you know? And this was an agreement to have full-time. They do two or three, you know, part-time equivalents, and to the detriment of younger people and not having any benefits, particularly health insurance. So I know it's close to the 15, but we can't go into that excuse, oh, people don't want to work. People actually want to work, and they want to work full-time and not piece together three part-time jobs. So I'm a little hesitant on this, you know, because the full-time benefit makes a world of difference, particularly to younger people working these types of service.
I think though, it says full-time equivalent, that wouldn't mean 15 people working 40 hours a week. And I have 25 people on my team, that doesn't mean I have 25 FTEs in my department. So you can take two people and make it one FTE. I don't think, I don't think, unless I'm misinterpreting, I don't agree this to mean.
So it could be even fewer full-time.
It could be, but the way a full-time equivalent doesn't mean one person working 40 hours a week.
Okay.
And that is correct. And part of it, the reason why they're not at the 15 level is because since COVID, if you go to a hotel now, you don't get service every single night. So that's changed. Part of the practice has gone, and I think that's at a lot of places. So that's why the 13 seems to be a good spot for them, unless somebody requests that overnight cleaning service making your bed. You know, you don't, you don't get that as much anymore.
And those do vary with chains, you know? I just stayed in South Dakota, which isn't known for its high service. But boy, they had, you know, their hotel was well-staffed.
Lot of companies, not just the hospitality industry, a lot of companies have changed their business, and they learned a lot from COVID. Hey, I don't really need to be doing this, you know? So that's why I was thinking, you know, maybe we should revisit the agreement. But that's the way it's going to be going forward.
So the motion has to do with waiving the default. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Comfort?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yep.
Callahan jury?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on, item C. This is to consider a resolution adopting or accepting the completion of the Luminary Lane Surface Repair Project by Norris Asphalt and approving pay application number two, which is the final payment, in the amount of $80,367.85. Norris Asphalt completed all the work on Luminary Lane Surface Repair Project. The scope of the project was a mill and overlay with full-depth patches where necessary on the existing roadway from 21st Avenue West north to the dead end. Staff received change order number one that included final quantity adjustments and pay application two from the contractor. Change order one is a net decrease of $2,802.15, to be exact. And the pay application number two is in the amount of $80,367.85. And it includes four inches of HMA paving, partial traffic control, partial mobilization, and the total breakdown of cost is in the, in the packet. Boy, the before and after pictures are amazing. You think is really patching, the whole works needed it, and they apparently did it. So do you have a motion of support for accepting the completion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
That's another sore eye that's going. Especially when you come into town.
Yeah.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callahan jury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is to consider a resolution authorizing a certification of debt under ICA Section 403.19. And this is associated with an agreement for private development between the city and Marge LLC. So on June 20th of 2018, the city council approved Resolution 1806.116, approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Oskaloosa and Marge LLC. Pursuant to the terms and conditions thereof, Marge satisfied the following conditions. First, the developer requesting in writing by October 1 of 2023, and that the city certified debt. Two, the city having an accepted dedication of at least one phase of the infrastructure improvements. And three, the developer having submitted its certification of qualified costs and expenses for the completed phases of infrastructure improvements. And four, the developer remaining in compliance with the development agreement. So Marge has satisfied all the preconditions to the certification of debt set out in section 8.1E, except for having dedicated at least one phase of the infrastructure improvements. However, all three phases of the infrastructure improvements are substantially completed, except for the segments of sidewalks on the undeveloped lots. Approval of the resolution shows the city is willing to certify debt as requested by the developer, notwithstanding the developer's failure to satisfy the conditions set forth in section 8.1E, with the understanding that if the developer fails to dedicate at least one phase of the infrastructure improvements by the time a grant payment would be otherwise paid, or if the developer otherwise fails to satisfy the conditions precedent to the payment of the grants set out in section 8.4 of the development agreement, the city shall not make any economic development grant payments. The developer agreement is on file and available for review in the city clerk's office. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution. Do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So they do, as the lots get developed, they're still required to put sidewalks in?
Yep.
And we have some sort of leverage to ensure that that happens, I guess, as if they don't do it, I guess, is my question?
Developer provided a bond for the sidewalk, because it makes sense to go in as they're building the houses.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ocean?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callahan jury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us to the end of the regular agenda. Reports from city staff, city manager, anything?
Nothing, your honor. Thank you.
Okay. City clerk, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, city attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, moving on. City council members. Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah.
I want to say happy birthday to Chief Vaughn.
Are you 39 now, Violet?
Sorry. Happy birthday.
Okay. Charlie?
Happy birthday, chief.
Joe?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
You're welcome. Yep.
Lisa?
Yeah, I've just been doing a little traveling. I was in Coming, Iowa, and they're doing a brand new called The Homestead at Middlebrook. So geothermal townhouses, and they've got a brew pub and that. So it was nice to see that housing development. It's nice to go to communities now with more of a city council eye. And then I was in Sioux Falls this weekend for a conference and went on a walking tour of their warehouse district. And it was fantastic to see the renovated variety of warehouses in that western town. So anyway, back to our city planning, and hopefully we'll get that to a mix of old and new.
And finishing up, I guess, I want to amplify, if I can, the Oskaloosa Main Street ability to do the tour of locations. Bridget's Public House is brand new, and some of the other featured attractions are good. The city council has been privileged on a couple of occasions to have done a tour through the old post office. It is.
Amazing.
Incredible.
Wonderful.
Yeah, what they said. But, you know, the enormous amount of work that takes place, but along with it is the standards. That thing is located in the historic preservation area of Oskaloosa, the historic district. And so they had standards that they had to uphold as they were doing the redevelopment work on that building. And it is beautiful coming together. So the ticket costs 10 bucks, and you don't want to be left out. But I am convinced that the community will be, will be buzzing about that, if not more. And you'll want to have seen it, not unlike the way the city reacted, or the residents of the city reacted when the YFA opened up. There were lots of people who thought they knew what was going on, but the people who really had fun were the ones who actually went there, walked around in it, and enjoyed it. So anyway, please, you know, do what you can to get that ticket bought, and we're looking forward to having that happen. So with that, do we have a motion of adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.